Thank you all for joining us. We're gonna go ahead and commence with the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Councilman Jindal? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Councilman Jindal?
President.
Councilman Leonard?
Here.
Councilman Rigsby?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daley?
Here.
Mayor Duper?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure where we have workshop listed here on the agenda, but we're not doing a workshop. That was just from pulled over from last week. So we'll start off with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would join me, please. Dear Father in heaven, thank you once again for allowing us to come together and work on issues that are critical to our families and our neighborhoods and our friends and this community. Please guide us as we deliberate. Please help us to keep an open mind and on track with a thoughtful process. Thank you so much for your blessings that we live in such a great country and such a great state. Thank you for all of this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this point in the evening, we invite anyone who would like to come up and speak on something that is not on the agenda. If you're here because you want to speak on something that is on the agenda, you can wait till that opportunity. But if you want to talk about anything else, you'd have the opportunity to come up now and speak on anything that's non-agendized. Dick? Nope. Okay. Seeing nobody run forward, we'll go ahead and move on. We'll deal with conflicts of interest as they come up. And we'll start with our scheduled items. Item number one, a request to remove a city tree from 11467 Richmond Road. And we heard a little bit about this during the public comment last week, but we couldn't talk about it because it wasn't on the agenda. So welcome back. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you want to open?
No, we attached her letter that was at the last week's city council meeting. So you have that in front of you. And you also have a picture of these that went out and took from the distance. So, and then the property owner, she's here, and there's a couple of people that would like to talk about on this item.
Is there anyone on the council that wants a refresher on the details?
Well, she's on, she wanted to speak.
Dr. Rigsby, should we just invite up the speakers? Are you good? Okay, I'll invite up our first-
One question, I think, that we were unsure about, which was, how much of the area is city versus landowner?
It is, the trees is in the city property, city right-of-way, so. But, but the canopy is kind of over the right-of-way and in close to the property order.
So there's nothing clearly marked. Just from my general understanding, so let's say on the north side of the city, are they also about, like, how many feet in does the right-of-way go usually?
Twelve feet from the face of curb is usually where the right-of-way is, twelve feet.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to invite up Ms. Zhang? Oh, yes. Whichever, whoever wants to come up first. Or you want, you can come up together, actually. It's fine.
All right, we'll come up together.
And then Rosemary, you're the other speaker, right?
That's me.
Yeah, you're Rosemary.
Yes. All right. I think that's close enough.
Yeah. Believe it or not, people are watching at home.
All right, so, dear Mr. Mayor and City Council, and I know Dr. Rigsby missed out my presentation last week, so here I, I'm gonna go again. So my name is Rosemary Ping. I'm the property owner of 11467 Richmond Road, and I have a big city tree in my front yard. And I submitted a written request for the removal of the tree on March 1st, and I was notified by Mr. Shinton that the tree will be removed on March 20th this year. Then action was temporarily placed until a nearby neighbor reported a possible hawk nest in the tree, causing a delay until being evaluated by the California Department of Wildlife. So August 4th, Mr. Shinton said there is a petition against cutting the tree. A decision was made to not cut the tree down, but rather to simply trim it and rebuild the wall around it. So I would like to share the reason why the tree is a hazard and poses a danger for the property and my renter and the nearby neighbors. And, and I have attached some pictures in the packet. Show the roots have infiltrated, broken down into the sprinkler pipe multiple times, causing them to break, has led to flooding, lawn damage, and dirt to leak into the home water system. And during the high winds, heavy branches has fallen, posing a threat to the house nearby, cars, and pedestrians. And the roots had broken the cement, cement and brick structures surrounding the tree, as well as the curb and the street. And the water meter is located next to the base of the tree, and the gas line runs parallel to the street underneath the roots of the tree. So I believe the solution the city is presenting does not specifically address or resolve any of the issues and concerns stated. Over the 20 years, city has trimmed the tree, fixed the curb and the street multiple times, which I appreciate it very much, but is costly and not the solution. And I'm requesting the removal of the tree to prevent further damage to the personal city property and the potential injury or death. And I'm not opposed to replace this oversized tree with another tree that is more suitable and safer for the location. And if you have any to add.
I'm Cholene Jolly, and I'm the renter who lives with the tree. And it is true that the gas line rights runs right under the roots of the tree. And the first decision to cut the tree and then grind the stump made all kinds of sense to me because I don't think we can yank the roots out without damaging the gas line and without damaging pipes that are other pipes that are under there. As we prepared to cut the tree in March, California, Southern California Gas sent a man out to make sure that that was where the gas line was. And I still have little yellow flags going right across the tree that show where the gas line runs. And he said that when the tree was cut, that there would need to be someone from the gas company to be sure to be on-site when that happened. I think they're very concerned about that. One of the things that I have trouble with a little bit is that Rosemary Ping, the owner of the property, does not seem to have the ultimate say about what happens to this tree. Ultimately, I think it's between the city and her, and perhaps not other neighbors who are opposed to cutting the tree down. I also wonder what happened to the other trees on the cul-de-sac. I was told that there were trees on almost every property, and this is the last one standing. And I'm wondering if the reasons for removing those trees are very similar to what we are presenting today. I realize that it is hard to cut down a grand old tree that's been there for a long time, but we feel that the safety factors are there. When I first approached the city about taking the tree out, it was because the little block wall that was around it had a spot about like this broken out, and there was dirt coming out from under the roots. Now, the roots stand two and a half feet above the grass level. And I wondered how much dirt could come out of these roots without the tree starting to tilt a little bit. And if it falls across the street, there are cars habitually parked there. If it falls towards my house, it will hit the garage and possibly my guest bedroom. Ellen Yu, who is next door and whose letter you also have, she and her husband want this tree out also. She's very nervous that it's going to fall on her house and on her bedroom. The tree is tall enough to do any of that. Now, I don't know, I would hate to think that there's an ominous moment when this tree is going to go down, but I do think it is dangerous enough that we need to consider that possibility. When we have storms, when we have winds, branches of the tree have come off. And there are places where the tree has had big branches cut before because of that very danger. I also realize that it's a much greater expense to take the tree clear down than to trim the top of the tree. But we are asking, please, in light of the danger situation, the unsightliness of this root ball, which is huge, which is damaging the curb appeal, and frankly, I think it hurts her value of the property to see such an unsightly thing. But we are asking that the tree be cut and ground to a point where it doesn't damage the gas line or the other pipes. But that is our plea to you today. Anything else?
I think that's-
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing us.
Of course. Thank you very much for coming down. Okay, Zi Zhang?
Good evening. My name is Shi Zhang, and I am a resident of 11454 Richmond Road. One of the houses across the street from the tree. My main concern is with the lack of greenery in Loma Linda in general, especially when compared to cities such as Redland. In 2019, I almost didn't purchase this house because Richmond Road and most of the surrounding neighborhood is so barren. As one drives down Barton Road and it becomes Brookside, it's pretty obvious that it's a different city, one that actually cares about trees and nature. Many Southern Californians that I've encountered recently still consider Loma Linda to be the ugly buffer between San Bernardino and Redlands. And I urge the city leaders to put some work into changing that. My fight is not with my neighbors. I want them to be safe and healthy, but I do urge the council to do its due diligence in verifying the claims of damages incurred by the tree. In my three years of living across the street, I have never witnessed any property damage, gas or water leaks, or road blockages incurred by the tree. Obviously, I don't live on that property, so I don't know, but I have never witnessed anything. We have no problems parking under the tree. It's true that the tree is prolific with seed pods, and a branch did fall during a storm a week ago, a year ago, but that could have been prevented with regular trimmings of the tree. The tree is also home to many animals, including a hawk. All species of hawks are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of 1918, making it illegal to disturb their nests and by extension, the trees in which they nest yearly. Ultimately, if we cut down the tree, what kind of precedence are we setting for Loma Linda? We are allowing just residents to strip away the little remaining nature because it poses an inconvenience. We drive away long-term residents who care to invest in the land and the future of the city. A study published by Schwab et al. in Nature Communications found that trees reduce land surface temperatures in urban cities by 14 to 22 degrees Fahrenheit. As our summers get hotter and hotter, we need this cooling effect to make Loma Linda a more comfortable, habitable city. If the tree is to come down for safety reasons, my neighbors and I propose that ten trees be planted on Richmond Road to replace it. We have to invest in our environment and provide habitable community for future residents and wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, questions, comments?
I don't have questions, but Councilman Jindal just led the effort last year to get a designation. Go ahead and tell them what we have at Loma Linda in terms of trees.
Sure. So last year, we became part of the Tree City, which basically reaffirms that we're a city that is committed to growing more trees and keeping a urban canopy within the city. Part of that effort was because we had a lot of new trees planted in our community garden, thanks to a lot of effort by our city staff and our city manager. The idea I heard where, you know, let's, if we have to bring this tree down, like, let's do some replanning, I think would go very well with the effort of us being a Tree City and promoting that kind of concept within the city.
We have no, oh, you're the mayor. You're the pro tem. Okay. Okay, my, my question is, what kind of tree is it?
It's a type of ash.
An ash tree. Do we have any information on whether this kind of tree is more apt to drop large limbs than another type? These things have reputations, either pro or con. For example, nut trees drop their limbs.
Yeah, this is ash trees. And, and we have a lot of that on Tulip and on Daisy Street. In that neighborhood, there's a lot of ash trees on both sides of the street.
So I've asked IT to pull this up for us. If we advance with the arrow going north, yeah. This is Google Earth from February of this year, February 2022. And that matches the pictures that were submitted. So I just want everybody to get kind of a view of what we're talking about.
My question is, what, these things don't usually come to city council. They're usually handled by the, by the staff, landscape staff. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable making a motion for one tree in the city. I think that we can comment, but-
So, so I can give you a little background. I know when, is it, is it Ping?
Yes.
When Ms. Ping submitted her request and went back and forth, there was a point where I believe she submitted an email to, to either the council or to, at least specifically to me. So I checked with the city manager on, on what exactly happened here. We are operating on a premise based on a longstanding idea that this city council does not want to remove trees based on what the other young lady had said, that we are a city that wants our trees, that cares about our tree growth, that invests in our trees. So very rarely do we want, or have we ever expressed an interest in removing any trees throughout the city. So the city was operating under that premise, that this was a city council directive, although it had not come specifically to us based on previous will and, and direction and stuff that we've given as a council. We are a council that is not generally in favor of removing trees. And obviously, we spend a lot of money taking care of our trees. Now, I have to, I take a little umbrage when people compare us to other cities because I challenge them. And if, if they want to go see all the other issues some of those cities have, we don't have those issues. So if you want to trade lots of beautiful trees that Redland has for streets with potholes, I'm not sure what to tell you. But I'm pretty proud of the city and what we do here because I know how invested we are. That all being said, this seems to rise to a level where there's a, a conflict at the city staff level, and they're looking to us for some type of direction. So that's, that's kind of how it ended up here.
Thank you.
Sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question about jurisdiction. I understand, and the front 12 feet of my property is city, and it's technically not mine, but I was told when I built that I'm responsible for landscaping it and maintaining it. So I think typically, the trees in the city right-of-way were not planted by the city. And I'm wondering what responsibility the city has, or whether we have even the right to tell a landowner not to cut down a tree that they ostensibly planted and they took care of for all those years. Do we have any rights either way? Can I go into anybody's yard at 11 feet, six inches from the curb, can I put in a tree they don't want? And then if I do, can I, can I take down one they want? So I, I want to know the limits of my responsibility and my rights as a city council.
Okay, this, this tree probably planted 30, 40 years ago and by the property owner. And the reason, I think, is by the property owner because they went ahead and built a block wall, a planter around the trees. Because usually the city, we don't do that. And, and, to answer the question as far as can we remove the trees, if the trees are within the public right-of-way, the answer is yes, because it's in the public right-of-way. We have a right to trim it and, and maintain the trees. Because if the tree fall, the city is responsible for it. Correct, correct. And-
I think it, I think it's important to point out that we actually maintain a lot of trees inside the city that are not technically city trees. And we've gotten into the business of tree trimming for private homeowners over the years, and it's just a pattern of practice.
Within the right-of-way, within the public right-of-way.
No, I understand. Because, again, the liability purposes, but we do spend a lot of city money trimming.
Well, my question remains, do we have the responsibility to adjudicate this dispute? Or do we even have the right to adjudicate this dispute? In other words, can the landowner just say tough nails, I'm cutting the tree down? Whether we say no or not?
Well, the tree is in the public right-of-way, and we have a responsibility for maintaining that. So there, there is a little bit of tension there. And the tree apparently was not planted by the city. It was planted by a property owner. So-
There was no city 30, 40 years ago.
There was a city 51 years ago.
Fifty years?
Almost 52 years ago. On September 29th, it would be 50-
You were starting to make me feel younger. So for a minute there, I was like, oh, okay.
Okay, anyway.
But this tree is probably over 50 years old. Yeah. Okay, I was wondering if any of the other people who live on Richmond would have a comment. Masked people in the back row. Well, come forward and say something.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Andrew Parkins. I also live on the street. And I was thinking maybe there could be some sort of mitigation measure, like building a structure around it that would hold up the tree. I've seen metal structures built around trees in the past that hold them up. And maybe some, we're willing, we're happy to help invest in that as neighbors living across the street. There's got to be some measure that can be, some halfway measure, instead of only taking it down or leaving it. Maybe we can keep it as is and maintain it and hold it up. And as of what I see, my personal observation, is it's a hassle that the, the tree sheds a lot of leaves, but that's a job for a leaf blower rather than get rid of vegetation like that.
So what would be the, what would be the problem in your mind? Because if I look at these pictures, this tree is way out of proportion with every other tree in the picture in the neighborhood. You can't, well, that doesn't show that, have you seen these?
Yes, it's not-
It's way out of proportion.
With trees on other streets.
And, and if it's, if it's dropping branches, and the trunk of that tree is much larger than any of the other trees on the street, so what would your objection be to removing this tree and planting another, not a, you know, a newborn tree that's virtual stick, but plant a regular tree like we do in other places in the city that will grow, that will look like the other trees in the neighborhood? What would be the objection that you would express to that?
So I don't think it's out of proportion with other trees in Loma Linda.
Just look at the picture.
Yeah, it is on that street, but one street over on Poplar, there are many other trees.
I'm talking about this street.
On that street, yes, it is indeed the one remaining tree, which is a tragedy in its own right. But on Poplar, which is just the next street over, there are quite a few trees that size.
Okay, but you haven't answered my question. What, what would be the problem with removing it and putting a, you know, a tree, not just a stick in the ground, a tree that's actually producing leaves and so forth?
So this is old growth. It's easily more than 50 years old, older than 50 years. It's beautiful. It's got a lot of shade. It adds value to the property that it sits on. It adds value to Loma Linda as a whole. Cutting down old growth because of inconvenience is a tragedy. We don't cut down the sequoias because they, they stand in our way.
It's more than an inconvenience from what they're describing has already occurred.
And as far as that's concerned, actually, it would be great if the city council could look into exactly the, the alleged harm that this tree has caused in the way of damaging a sewer line or, or a water line or anything like that. The fear that this tree might fall is unfounded because there are many others just like it with roots that sit above the street level just like it, all over Loma Linda. And there's no fear that they're gonna fall. Anything can happen, of course, but the fear that this tree is a danger is unfounded.
All right, it's your word against the homeowner and the renter.
And it would be great if the city council can-
Can you play a message on just, nobody's around you, so-
It would be great if the city council can, can look into the allegations that, that this tree causes any kind of harm whatsoever. In other words, we don't believe that there's a whole lot of harm being done by the tree. There are others like it in Loma Linda all over the place that are not causing any harm, and nobody's afraid they might fall.
Okay. Can you answer my question, though? I understand you want to retain the tree. What is the downside to removing this over alleged issues that we've already been talking about and replacing it with a younger but a full tree that, that doesn't pose that same kind of an issue?
The downside is the act itself, the act of removing an old tree. That is the downside. It's a bad thing to remove this old growth tree and replace it with a younger tree. Is, yes, it would be fantastic to, to plant 10 other trees on the street. I'm all for that. But taking this one down is tragic. We shouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jindal?
Ron, so I think what he's getting at is it took it 40, 50 years to grow up, and you can't replace that with a single young tree. But my question for the city manager is, is it possible to get this tree, we have a brand-new oak gar, oak park that we're building, is it possible to transport it there, or is that not a viability?
No, it's, it's, usually the big mature trees is very difficult to transplant.
Okay, so two follow-up questions for that. First, so there's one suggestion of keeping this tree. How would the city go about that? Do we have a plan of where we can support this tree and make sure it's not an inconvenience to the homeowner? And then my second question would be, do we have a, what's our policy on trees that we do have to cut? Like, currently, if we have to cut a tree, I know you mentioned that we could possibly replace it with a new one. Have we encountered this situation in the past?
Oh, the one that, the trees that we cut is, is two things. Is it the branch is broken or diseased by termite that have potential of falling down, then yes, we remove them. Or if you see Long Mountain View, the tree is underneath the power line, that the edison will come out and trim it, but it's treated so bad that eventually it's off balance, and then we end up removing them. So that seemed to be the, the two reasons when we remove trees.
I was, I was kind of hoping, and I, I realize it's only been a week since we, we addressed this, plus, yeah, I, I was kind of hoping we would maybe get like a cost estimate of what it would cost to, to take a tree down like that. And I know the homeowner suggested just cutting it off and leaving a stump. But if we actually removed it, pulling the roots out to where we could, because I, I, obviously, if we just leave a stump there, we couldn't replace it with a new tree. So we would have to remove roots and all to be able to look at replacing it. And I'm guessing that's gonna be pretty high, but you obviously have it in front of you.
It's $1,920, so about $2,000.
That's actually a lot cheaper than what I thought it was.
Right, to, to cut down trees and do stump grave.
That's just a stump.
No, 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 trees and stump, remove the stump. Both. Right. So, so also, in addition to, to when we remove tree, is really a liability, you know, when, when it's leaning, it can damage the, the house or cars and sort of what we do.
Well, this one doesn't appear to be leaning. And also, and I did an extensive internet review for a minute.
Google truth.
Yes. And I, and it states that trees that are in danger of dropping limbs, it- Yes, and I, and it states that trees that are in danger of dropping limbs, it lists half a dozen trees that are not ash. So it wasn't on the list of the, of the big offenders. And it also states that limbs that are most likely to fall suddenly and unexpectedly are horizontal limbs with an upward deflection at the end, because that puts a lot of strain on that joint. And this tree, from the distant view, looks like all of the limbs are in a Y formation, so they're, by that standard, stable. And, um, I was also wondering if, or how much it would cost to get an arborist to assess the thing and see how safe it is.
Yes, we could do that. Uh, we, we hire West Coast Arborists, they sort of went out and, and ta, take a look at the trees and, and gave me the estimate. So what, what the city...
I'm sorry, we did, we, we got an arborist to look at this one already or no?
No, no, because, because we, we give an option to, to, if we can thin the trees. By thinning it is we go inside the tree, the, the growth, and then trim branches of the trees. Correct, thinned it, not just top it, thinned it. So that when the wind blow, it will blow through it instead of just tip it over. So, and then we also, that's why the city staff went out and removed the block wall so that we can put in a new block wall. So that what we...
So the block wall's not there anymore?
Nope, we, we already move it. Yeah, we already remove it.
So we've, we've hired arborists before for trees. How much do they cost? I think it's around five hundred from what I recall.
Yeah, we have a contract with West Coast Arborists, they, they just come out and, and take a look at the trees.
I think we should do that before we go any further. Because we need, we need somebody who knows trees to tell us what this tree is likely to do. Because from my little internet search, it's likely to drop small limbs, but not large limbs. And small limbs are not the fear factor. They're a nuisance, but they're not dan, dangerous. Um, can anybody who saw the limb that fell in the street, uh, is that the one we have pictures of? Because those, that looks like a small limb. Is the limb that fell in the street a huge limb? Or it looks small? I mean, it doesn't look like it's a foot in diameter.
The one that's in the picture is the only one I've ever seen. One of the neighbors said that it was walking the street and, uh, to my knowledge, never happened. Um, it was pushed up against the curb, sat there for a few days until someone came to collect it.
Yeah, I can see the diameter of the limb. It looks to me to be about five inches, six inches in diameter at the most. Is that true?
It's a pretty good-sized limb.
Yeah, it's not, it's not small, but it's not, it's not the kind that'll crush a house.
Yeah, I, I'm actually sitting, wondering how that picture could be faked. And, and I kinda felt like there, earlier there was a comment that we need to look into, verify this allegation, if the picture speaks for itself. I believe the limb fell. Um, I'm kinda going back to what, uh, Dr. Rigsby brought up to begin with, like, you know? Do we have a, could we forcibly stop the, the homeowner from removing a tree if they want to remove the tree on their property? We trim the tree in the city right of way because we're worried about the branches, things falling, and the liability. We only trim because of liability. But do we have the authority to stop somebody who owns the, the property, even though we have the right of way for liability protection? Do we have the authority to tell somebody what they can or can't do with that tree?
It is in the, the, in the city right of way, but, um, we could, we could look into that and provide an answer to the council at a later date to that. It's, it is, it's an interesting question. What I usually deal with is when it's a, a city-planted tree.
Right.
This is a little different. We believe it was planted by a property owner. And obviously, a property owner can, well, maybe not obviously. Property owner can decide what they want to plant in their yard and probably what they want to remove in their yard. But it is within the public right of way and there is a policy of wanting to maintain trees.
So, so can a, can a property owner now, one of the neighbors, go plant a tree in the city right of way?
Yes.
Okay, then if they plant it, why can't they remove it?
Oh, I, yeah, I understand, right.
I'm just using logic, I don't know anything about the law.
No, I understand.
So the, so the issue may not be can I, but will you pay for it?
I don't know if that's the underlying issue or not.
I don't, I don't know whether it is or not, but, but, you know, I, I think if it comes down, it sounds like we're willing to pay for it. Because it's in our right of way. But if, if, if someone else made the decision, and let's say that we disagree, let's say we don't want you to cut it down, but they want to cut it down, if they spend the nineteen hundred and twenty dollars, they can cut it down as far as I can tell.
And, and, and that may be true. From, from the city's perspective, um, from my perspective, it's a concern for liability because I can guarantee you that the city would be named as a defendant in any action. I mean, whether we'd be liable or not, that's always a debate, but I can guarantee that if it caused, um, property damage or personal injuries or a car got smashed...
I know personally, several claims have been made to the city for trees and branches that have fallen just in this last year. I've been, I've been privy to that. And we are always, um, and I, I hate to make it sound like that, but you, you go where you think the money is. And so if somebody's got their car parked there and, and the, the branch falls on it, they're gonna come knocking on our door, they're not gonna knock on the homeowner's door.
Oh, I bet they'll knock on the homeowner's door, too.
Everybody's door.
Question for the city manager.
They are, they are not paying out.
So how much would it cost to plant ten trees in that same cul-de-sac if they wanted it?
It, it'd cost about two hundred dollars a piece.
So about two thousand dollars?
Right, and then, and then, uh, and then you had to give permission.
From the homeowners.
From the homeowners, yeah.
See, that further points out that we don't have jurisdiction over this twelve feet. But if we have to get permission, then we don't have jurisdiction.
Usually as a courtesy, I, I, I just don't want to go by trees.
I don't know about a, I mean, I, I'm just thinking about some, if the city wanted to put one of the beautiful pieces of art that you've put around the city eleven feet on, into my property, is that allowable? Under the same theory?
It would be the city, though, not just some random person. Right, like the city would have to allow it.
No, but that's, that's, well, that's the point. So if the city can plant a tree eleven feet onto your property, what else could they do on your property?
Well, technically, that twelve feet is not your property.
Right.
That's the point, but what, and, and I'll just give my land as an example. Uh, I have a gross and a net acreage for my, for my property. And that twelve feet is the difference between the two. But I have responsibility for landscaping and I have planted plants there. And the city has nothing to do with it either way.
But, oh, go ahead.
But, you know, as far as if one of my, if one of my bushes scratched someone and they died from sepsis, I wouldn't see the city as being responsible. I'm sure they could be sued, because anybody can sue anybody for anything. But it just, I, the whole, the whole thing about the twelve feet, as far as I'm concerned, is more about sidewalks than anything else. We basically want the right to put in a sidewalk against your will. If you don't want a sidewalk, too bad, we're gonna put one in, we own the twelve feet. So, but as far as trees go, we've been very, um, hands-off. You know, we, we don't plant the trees for them, we don't tell them they have to plant trees unless it's a new construction and it's part of their landscaping plan that we have approved. But otherwise, we're a fairly libertarian city, we live and let live. Now, when it comes to these kinds of disputes, you look what happened in Redlands, I mean, the Seventh Day Adventist Church in Redlands almost got put in jail over cutting a couple trees down in the median. But those were in the median, which are clearly not any landowner's property. This is in the berm on the side. I'm from part of the country where we call that the berm. You may call it the, something else. But I don't see that we have all that much jurisdiction. However, we can step in and volunteer to pay because we're a very good city, we're a tree-loving city, and we're not an ugly place between San Bernardino and Redlands. We may be slightly uglier than Redlands, but we're not uglier than San Bernardino by a long shot. So, uh, yeah, yeah. Well, we're serving man, but we're serving man with trees. But I, I think probably the better thing to do at this point would be to get, you know, we've got enough of a, of a good financial situation, we can afford an arborist, and we can get an actual intelligent opinion about the risk of this tree. And this, who knows? This may be a tree that's, you know, this tree is known at that age to fall down and kill everybody. Maybe it's a tree that'll go another hundred years and get twice as tall. We don't know for sure. Let's get somebody who knows.
On, on the flip side, we get an arborist, there might be some historical value and some real significance where we need to keep it. We might have to reroute the street.
The, um, the, the other dimension of this, if we're gonna get an arborist, and I, I support that, I think it's a good idea. The, uh, I'm still concerned about the gas line, too. And the reason for that is that, oh, I don't know, this is years ago, years before I was on the city council. Um, we had a tree, um, we had three trees in front of our yard that were planted by the developer. Um, but the, uh, one of them, the roots were going down and, uh, broke the, uh, uh, water irrigation system. So I called the city up because we hadn't planted it, we hadn't even put the irrigation system in, it came with the house. And, uh, city came out and, uh, said, no. They dug, found the problem, said, no, this is, this is a tree root, it's our problem. And the city took care of the whole thing and they had to cut in the sidewalk and replace that. So, you know, at least that's a precedent. But I do worry about if, I mean, it's unbelievable to me that we'd have a tree, big tree like this planted right over the top of a gas line. Because roots get nasty. This was gnarly when they dug it up.
So, but that brings up a, a really good point. So, um, are, are we, is the theory that that gas line was there first? Fifty, sixty, it, I, an arborist would be great, because I'd really like to know how old this tree is, and I think it predates the city. But when did the gas line come in?
Same time it came in the house, and then the homeowner planted trees.
Okay, so the, yeah, okay, that, I get that.
Well, the tree was smaller then, and the tree has enveloped.
No, no.
Yeah, but not necessarily, because this tree, the roots went up two and a half feet and it took, it basically...
Or the roots pushed it up.
Yeah, so, you know, the...
If the root structure of a tree the size of this one is only two and a half feet, that thing's gonna blow over.
True, but you, but you have to, you have to decide what's important. Is the gas line important or is the tree important? And if you're a tree lover, the gas line can be rerouted. If you're a gas line lover, the tree can be chopped down and replaced. And you have to decide.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I, you, I think that you're gonna do a little more research on this. So my gas line concern, we have an issue, I'm assuming that's the responsibility of the gas company at the same time, if, if, uh, I'm, I'm concerned about what kind of liability we need to have.
The, the gas line, the lateral is responsibility of the homeowner. The gas company responsible for the main out on the street.
So if that thing blows up one day...
They will come out, fix it.
...they just come out and repair it.
And, and send you the bill.
According to Zillow, it was built in nineteen sixty-seven.
And another comment about Redlands. Redlands got an eighty-year, I care because Redlands got an eighty-year head start. Eighty years from now, Loma Linda will be a beautiful tree city.
Right, not if we cut down all...
Unless we cut all the trees down.
Okay, so I, I...
It doesn't provide direction, right?
Yes, I think, I think, I was kinda hoping we were gonna have some of that anyway, I was surprised you had the...
I move, we spend money on an arborist and bring it back.
Get a, get a full report?
Can we just provide direction instead of moving that?
Yeah, staff direction. And also, I think we'd like to maybe see if we can find a legal precedent on that, if there's anything.
Can we have a full-on rest fee? Just write out your names, this way we'll notify you when we have to. And we'll reorganize.
I, I would imagine, we're not, we're not gonna drag this out, so maybe by next month, our next month meeting?
Yes, I would like to do it, but I just wanna make sure the arborists will...
Before the hawks come back.
Milford snuck in while I wasn't looking, I'd like to hear his position on this.
I don't think anybody wants to hear my position. Well, I'll give it to you anyway.
All right.
And these people are not gonna like what I'm gonna say, probably, because I lived on Tulip from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand eight. So that's, what, thirty years? We have trees like this, exactly like this, the ash trees, up and down Tulip, up and down Daisy. And they're beautiful, they're huge. My tree did exactly the same thing, popped up the sidewalk, they come out and trim the, trim that root and put the sidewalk back in. And they even actually did some, some block, some, uh, they blocked the roots somehow below the surface. They're gorgeous trees. And if that tree comes down, uh, this building is gonna come down. Because they are so solid. They're just, and, and they're gorgeous. They're, they're wonderful trees. Um, I think a compromise needs to be reached here somehow. I think, I, if they're worried about the safety of the tree, then I think maybe the city should go in and do some of that protection. But, uh, I really think that, uh, that there is, my, my, in, in watching, we never had any limbs of anything, of any size fall, we never had any problems at all. And, uh, and we love those trees. I just wish there were more of them in the city. This is probably not, and these, and these weren't planted by the homeowners, these were planted by the person, the, the developer that put in the subdivision because there's a requirement to put in a street tree. I'm, where I live, on my street, I cannot believe, there's only like three street trees. And that subdivision was built about sixteen years ago. And evidently, some, some of the homeowners have taken out the trees. And I think it's a tragedy. And I, I applaud, um, Councilman Jindal for pushing that Loma Linda be a tree city. But these, I, these are not in any danger at all in my, in my experience. And they're gorgeous, so...
Okay, and there you have it, from one of the founders.
One more piece of direction. So since we're getting more data on this, can we also, um, I, I know you already said it's around two hundred dollars to plant more. So regardless of where this goes, um, I'd definitely be interested to see how we can potentially plant more where residents are willing, um, in the future.
We, we are, we budget twenty thousand dollars every year for tree planting program, so, so we have been.
If I want a tree in my right of way, I can...
Yeah.
I can come to you and get a tree?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Tomorrow.
I did not know that. Unfortunately, I have a sidewalk, so that might not work out.
This young, young lady up, up front here.
I was just gonna say, I live, my husband and I live on Tulip, three doors down from where he used to live. And I chose that street because it had those trees on it. And I was very sad that our house does not have a tree, so someone must have complained or it tipped or whatever happened. And the house next to us doesn't have a tree. And it's hot right there. We're trying to figure out how to plant trees because the whole tree is shaded and cooler than if you go down another street. It really adds so much. And they are messy. We're picking out seedlings and little baby trees from our yard all the time, but being from back east where trees are, you don't worry about things tipping over. Trees drop their leaves, they drop their seeds, they're huge. And out here where we have palm trees, people are worried, are worried a little bit about anything bigger than a certain height. But this tree's roots go out under the street, under the house, I mean, they're all over the place. It's a massive root base on that tree. So it's not gonna tip over branches, yeah, they can fall out. But that's where my husband and I have wondered why, if there is an arborist, I'm pleased to hear that there is one, um, that you can get a hold of and that you use. I'm pleased to hear that there is one, um, that you can get a hold of and that you use, because sometimes it seems like we could sure use an arborist to look at our trees, you know, and, and make sure that they're good and that they go around the city and check things like that.
We don't have, we don't have arborists staff, but we had to contract them out, so.
So I can understand that's expensive.
I don't know, I see, we've not, not property owners.
Well, now you know that, uh, you can contact the city and we'll help put a tree in your yard if you want it. The, the other comment I'd make is that, um, we help maintain, uh, I, my mother-in-law has a house in South Pasadena where they have lots and lots of big trees, older trees. And one of the issues in Pasadena is they, they have a law where you, you know, the city maintains those trees, but every time we get a big windstorm and a rainstorm close together, they lose some of those trees. I mean, just watch the, the, the local news from, out Los Angeles, they go out and take pictures of all these trees with these huge root structures that are, that are, you know, halfway to the roof or higher, and, uh, so they do blow over. And so I'm, I'm saying, I, I have seen enough of that in Pasadena, where we're down there frequently, uh, uh, that it's not an irrational concern that you have, and, uh, um, you know, we have our trees thinned out and trimmed every year because of the wind. We had a back fence, a wood fence, that blew over, the wind gust came so hard that it blew our whole back fence over into the trees and had to replace it. So it's not, I understand your concern, but I, I'm trying to figure out how to balance that with the benefits. I mean, we don't have a dearth of trees in Loma Linda, or we would've never gotten this designation from, where was it? Some organi.
Tree City USA.
Tree City USA, I mean, they, we had to make an application to get that. And, and, uh, you know, the, their premise for existing, as I understand it, is to be sure that there's plenty of trees for the environment, uh, both the aesthetic environment as well as the climate. So, and I, I think we're all in the same camp on that, I think the homeowner's in the same camp on that, but I don't think your concern is irrational, because every year, there are trees in Pasadena that blow over every year, and they do fall on cars, and they do fall on houses, and they have massive root structures that get pulled out. So i- it's not irrational, but at the same time, you know, I understand the comments from other people who've spoken, you know, it'd be nice if we had redwood trees around here, uh, it's not the place for a redwood tree. But, uh, so I, I hear both sides of this, and I think, uh, everybody on the council probably does, but to figure out just, you know, what the, uh, most appropriate and accommodating action would be, uh, I think is what we're seeking, and I think Councilman, um, Rigsby's idea of getting an arborist and checking out the law so we know where the boundaries are and where, whatever we do, it's within the appropriate boundaries of the law, is, is a good strategy, and I support it.
I, I think I just wanna add a little bit, uh, besides, you know.
This is being recorded, so we kinda need you, but.
Hello.
Just speaking to the.
Uh, but I, I just wanna ask you something, like, I, I get, like, even if a tree can stand right there through the wind, through the, I don't know, s- storm, but, uh, I also think about, like, breaking the pipe, it done it before, and also the roots will go into the water system, and which I turn on the faucet, it's dirt coming out, so I have to get people to come grind the roots, and, I mean, that's health concern, too. I, I get it, like, I, I think tree's important, and, like I said, like, um, I have no problem with a tree, but just not the oversized tree.
Just not the.
The oversized.
Oversized. Well, I had two trees go down in my neighborhood in the last couple of days with the wind, so they do go down. Um, I, I, I want to see, I like the big trees, um, I'm lucky enough, my, my street, we've got big trees that line the street, I love that look. There is something to be said about the East Coast and how, how trees are thought of back there, um, and I love the idea of this being a big, beautiful tree. I'm just, I get a little concerned with, with property rights and homeowner rights, and, um, and obviously, I, that's part two, we wanna get some, some legal kind of, um, recommendations, but I had somebody ask me the other day, they're driving down California, and California's a beautiful street now, um, till you hit the church, and then it goes from that to that, and somebody asked me the other day, well, you guys are gonna take all that through eminent domain, right, and widen that up? And that scared me that somebody even thought that, because that's not, um, a position that I think this city ever wants to be in and, and whatever. Now, I know, ultimately, I think we're hoping to have some agreements with those property owners, we don't even have to get into that. My point is, is that I think that's one of the things that we've always kinda tried to be less government versus big government, and making demands and wielding that hammer, so that was my little speech. All right, so we'll get some direction and come back. All right, uh, moving on to item number two, which is a public hearing, Council Bill O- dash two zero two-two-dash-zero-three. Mr. City Manager, oh, I'm sorry, or Economic Development Director.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Duper, Councilmen, members of the public. My name is Llanan Matarita, and I am honored to be the new Community Development Director for the city of Loma Linda. Tonight I have, thank you.
Congratulations.
Tonight I have one public hearing item to introduce to you guys, it is for the new hotel incentive program and ordinance. So the purpose of the ordinance is to provide a financial incentive program through the transient occupancy tax that gets paid, but, uh, that gets paid to a qualifying hotel. The program attracts development of new hotels. To qualify, the hotel must be of high quality, such as having a minimum triple-A, three diamond rating, or be a qualifying brand with various amenities. Those amenities could be a pool, a, a gym, mobile device check-in, checkout, and there's a long list of amenities.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I think it's pertinent to the timing of your presentation. I, I'm concerned that a triple-A, three diamond rating might be the rating system for a particular brand of hotels? Is this a generic rating system, or is this a, just, like, in order to get this rating, you have to be a Hilton Hotel or something like that?
Uh, there, there is a, and then probably the hotel owner that's part of the program could expand in it, but it's my understanding that it is a rigid program to, it's not easy to be triple-A, let alone, um, a, a four diamond star rating hotel, but there, there is certain, a list of qualities to get that rating.
But it's a generic rating, it's not specific to a certain line of.
It's not specific to a certain line of brand, um, but with this new program, it will be opening it up to, um, qualifying brands with various amenities, and I'll definitely get into more details as I go through the presentation, but just, just to define the ho- hotel, in case you don't, a participating hotel, in case you don't know, it is for a minimum ninety guest rooms or more, and at least twenty-five-hundred square feet of meeting space, or the hotel could be under agreement with another hotel within a thousand square feet. With this economic incentive, the qualifying hotels wouldn't, would typically not be able or not want to operate within our city. So by re-establishing this incentive program, which we currently have in place, we will encourage the development of quality hotels that will ultimately serve the lodging needs of businesses, visitors, families, and promote tourism, provide employment opportunities, and provide a tax revenue for the city, additional tax revenue for the city. So the previous ordinance went into effect in two thousand six. The eligibility phase to enter in for a new application, application ended in June of twenty twenty, hence, this is why we're coming forward with this updated ordinance that would allow future hotels to qualify. With this re-established program, it will expire in June of twenty twenty-five, so five years later from the previous expiration. Since its adoption, only one hotel has applied and is part of the program, and that is Town Place Suites, which has ninety-five rooms, and they've been part of the program since two thousand and eighteen. With this adoption, the new one, the city is expecting one or two more hotels to participate before the next deadline. So what is a transient occupa- occupancy tax? We'll call it TOT for now. It is a lodging tax, similar to, imagine a sales ta- sales tax, but this is for lodging, so a guest will pay, pay this tax each night, they stay at a hotel or a motel. Um, the current tax that each guest pays is ten percent, and it is charged separately from the nightly rent charge. For those participating in this updated program, the operator will be required to submit the collected tax to the city on a quarterly basis. The city will pay incentive payments in an amount equal to fifty percent of the TOT collected. Incentive payments shall be paid for a period of ten years or earlier if the maximum aggregate amount is reached, and that maximum amount is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And all TOT afterwards, after it's reached its maximum amount, will remain in the city's general fund to pay for important city needed services and projects. So this slide gives some additional data and information, so just so you know, there are currently four hotels slash motels in Loma Linda. Every single hotel is required to pay TOT, and that includes Dutch Motel, Loma Linda Inn, Holiday Inn, and Town Place Suites. So in the past five years, the city has received approximately three point four million dollars total of TOT. On the slide, I have the numbers for the past few years of how much we received every year. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, that just ended a few months ago, the city received approximately four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from all, all four establishments. Previous year was six ninety-four, and nineteen, and the year before that was six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and the year before that, six hundred and sixty-nine. So you'll see, um, an obvious difference between, um, nineteen and twenty-one, obviously the decrease was due to the pandemic year, and, but, since the pandemic in the past two years, it has significantly increased. We imagine it was probably due because everybody was ready to go out, uh, the on show, open their raves, and so, yes, sir.
I'd just, to be sure I'm, I'm understanding what numbers we're looking at, the three point four million, uh, over the last five years, that is what came to the city, so it's the total TOT minus thirty percent?
It is the total TOT, not minus anything, so all four hotels.
Okay, so we put thirty percent of these numbers back to.
The participating.
And the only one eligible for wealth for.
And Town Place.
Yeah, Loma Linda Inn, Holiday Inn.
Currently, the only one eligible has been Town Place Suites, and they're the only one that has.
Because of the size.
Because of the size, it's, yes, to define a hotel, it's minimum ninety rooms.
Right.
As well as having required meeting space.
So, so Town Place.
And at, at the, sorry, also to qualify, you would have, need to be, uh, triple-A, three diamond rating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So none of the other, the other three has not been able to qualify, nor will they qualify with this new established program. So since.
One question, how much of the three point four came from the one qualifying hotel?
On the bottom, I have since, since their approval date, um, in two thousand eight, Town Place Suites has paid approximately one point four million dollars of TOT to the city, and the city has paid back thirty percent in their, their original established, in the original program, three hundred and eight, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand in TOT abatement to Town Place Suites. I do, I do wanna keep, keep in mind, um, so, the money received, see, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from all four establishment this past fiscal years, uh, I want you to compare it to what we paid for possibly one police, or what an agency pays for one police, will be well over a million dollars. So with this money, TOT, again, it goes into the general fund, it gets, uh, hope, we, we use it to pay for city services, such as sheriff, police, and other, um, programs in place. So ma- maybe it might appear like it's a lot, but it really doesn't, um, cover much. But this, again, and, and, it, it, it helps. And so with the two, two thousand eighteen Town Place Suites, I just wanna let you know that their agreement is under the old program, so their agreement's gonna last ten years. With this new program, and maybe I missed it on the slide, with this new program, it will either, I think it was in the previous slide, it will last ten years or until you reach the cap amount. Once again, the cap amount with this new program is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So after we pay him eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or whoever the, um, operator is that's participating in this program, we will end, end the program with the operator. So with a formula adopted program, we can expect to attract more hotel investment in Loma Linda, with the hope that it will enhance the hospitality experience for visitors and residents, provide jobs, promote tourism, provide tax revenue for the city to help various, various city service, services. And Mr. Rigsby, I know you had a question, so I spread to that.
I could ask it later, but, uh, this one could, wait, but, in the age of, uh, inflation, are we considering indexing any of these numbers? 'Cause, you know, if we had hyperinflation, eight hundred and fifty thousand could be one coin in your pocket, so, um, we may want to index our programs, but that's just a comment.
I do wanna know that we do have, um, it's sunsetting in two thousand and five, that's pretty much in three, in three and a half years, so if it's something that we need to revisit, if we reestablish the program, we can definitely revisit, and are, part of my, the part of the action I'm requesting for you today is also not only to adopt this, this hotel incentive program, but also to, um, I, I found a correction, needed on the first page, that actually has two thousand and sixteen numbers mentioned, so I'm asking that we switch it and amend it to say twenty twenty-one, that way we have the correct numbers, and to plan for CPI. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. I thought, oh, John was looking pensive. The, I have a, a couple of questions, um, and one of them, you, I think actually two of them you answered already, but just to, just to be sure I'm understanding this correctly, Town Place Suites is under the thirty percent, uh, incentive.
That is correct.
Program.
That is correct. They submitted in two thousand and eighteen.
And so the new program that we're proposing will not change that thirty percent for Town Suites.
That is also correct, it will not change. That program will stay in place, and any new qualifying hotels will be under this new program, which we pay them fifty percent, which ultimately will make us get, um, get to the eight hundred and fifty cap quicker.
And, and if I'm, I'm reading off the, the, uh, city report that you submitted, and I, I won't read the whole thing, but basically, there are criteria for when this would terminate, the eight hundred and fifty thousand, or, uh, it says the date on which there are a total of seven hundred guest rooms comprised of guest rooms of new qualifying hotels, et cetera, yada, yada. And so that's a cumulative total across all hotels that, that qualify for this new plan.
That's correct, that's correct. So even if we had three hotels, like, the two hotels that are currently being constructed, we would still have under three hundred qualifying or participating guest rooms that would pay into the TOT.
Um, is there a sunset date on?
There is a sunset date for the new program, it is twenty twenty-five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And that way, like I was saying, like, should, should things change, it would give us an opportunity to look at it, look at the program, see if it works for us, see if it works, if, if we really do need new hotels coming to the city, and.
Okay, and the, the fifty percent, uh, moving thirty to fifty, obviously is to provide added incentive to bring, uh, some quality additional hotels, there are good revenue for the city.
That is correct.
The, and, but where did the fifty percent come from? Uh, did, you know, Jarb flip a coin and decide it was gonna be fifty percent?
It was a discussion between Jarb, me, special counsel.
But is, do we know, uh, what cities around us have similar programs, and what kind of a reimbursement, what, what's our reimbursement competition for the TOT?
Usually, usually thirty percent, but what we did is we increased it fifty percent so that we will get that, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars sooner, and after that, the city will get a hundred percent, that's all.
Yeah.
And, and to, to the hotel builders, they prefer an upfront.
A higher incentive.
Correct.
Okay, so most of our competition, competing, uh, cities in the area are at thirty percent? Okay. And then, uh, last question is, uh, the, uh, this is regarding hotels that are not rated by triple-A, so they don't have a triple-A rating, and, um, and so, one of the, uh, qualifying, uh, criteria is. And, and so one of the qualifying criteria is that it being a, a quote, approved, equivalent qualifying hotel, close quote. The determination of conformity lies with the city manager. I, I have a question about that because our current city manager's not gonna, I knew you'd laugh at that. Our current city manager, I have full confidence in. But I don't know who the next city manager's gonna be when he gets recruited someplace else or retires or is tired of working with the city council.
He's promised he's gonna stay to two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, no, I, I knew. And, and, and so I'm wondering, should it be the city manager? Since we don't know what kind of city managers we'll have as a city for the next ten years? Or should it be the city manager or the, the community planner brings it to the city council for final approval?
I can answer that question because that came up when we, when we prepared this with our legal counsel, Mark Hips. And, and he used me, and I say, well, I'm not qualified. But what, the reason he used the city manager is at least we have somebody that, that person can go hire somebody, consultant that specialize in rated hotel and motel, hotel, in this case, to do the work for him, or for that person. So that's the whole idea.
But then, and, and I'm fine with that. But I think that needs to be added to the document because the next city manager that replaces you, assuming this program is still in place, may or may, he may, he or she may think they can-
You, you gave me a full-year contract extension.
Yeah, and this is a ten-year program.
This is, no, this is in two thousand and twenty-five.
Five-year program.
The eligibility phase, but we would also-
Ignore the question. I just was corrected.
He's younger than Councilman Daley and I, so.
Most people in the room are younger than Councilmen Daley.
I resent any talk of retirement and old age.
That works for me.
We also assume that the city manager's acting on the best interest of, of the council as well as the, the residents of the city. So we would assume he'd make sure that we have a quality hotel that's gonna participate in the program.
All right. Town Place, thirty percent, and New Hotel, fifty percent, right?
Correct.
Town Place will get an extension?
No.
No, great.
It's a one-time program.
So let me just summarize this. The only reason we're doing this is to attract new hotels, existing hotels. They received their carrot and they're back to normal in a way.
Only one.
Only one, right.
Well, I think, I think the hope, the hope is we actually have a, a pretty good partnership with, with the owners of that particular hotel. And the hope is that they actually are the ones that continue this on and continue forward. So we're investing in that relationship as well.
Since you mentioned that, what if I, or say I was the owner, I decide to shut down Town Place and rebrand it as a new hotel? Could I qualify for this program?
No.
Because you have to come back to the council to, to renew.
Cool. Thank you.
Questions? All right. Entertainer motion unless there's more. Oh, it's a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor, I want to remind you that the, the motion is on the slide today, but I'm also asking that you make that amendment from where we mentioned on the first page, two thousand and sixteen, to say two thousand and twenty-one.
I move the staff proposal, including the amendment, introducing this council bill O dash twenty twenty-two dash zero three on a first reading and set a second reading for October eleventh.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk.
The motion is to, the motion is to introduce on first reading and set for second hearing to October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, council bill O dash twenty twenty-two dash O three, and ordinance to amend and replace in its entirety, chapter three point one-three, the hotel incentive program of the city municipal code, and to change, although I don't know what page, change on the first page, the year of two thousand and sixteen to two thousand, correct, make that correction to two thousand and twenty-one.
Just for clarification, it's section three point one, three point zero two zero, paragraph A-
Okay.
-of the ordinance.
Okay, I'll note that in the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Absolutely.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We have the consent calendar, although I do have a question on number nine. Does somebody want to move it?
I'll move the whole consent calendar.
Can I have a first and a second? My, my, my question was, I was just looking for any type of plan that you had in the staff report on what that track is gonna look like, but I didn't see one. So do you have something worked out already?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And it's gonna be, if you go out to, to the Bailey Park, we completed it.
Yes, that one's all good.
And then people love it.
Yep.
So we gotta put something similar.
I just wonder how it's gonna work. That's a little bit of a different elevation, though, that, that, it's gonna look different.
It'll be at the base?
At the base toward it.
Okay.
And what about the big sandy area that we have for volleyball?
That's a water tent.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm, I'm not gonna be in there.
You're gonna be west of that. Okay.
And it's exposed to water.
Madam Clerk, we had a first and a second. I'm sorry, Dr. Daley, or Dr. Rigsby, you had a question? No. Okay.
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who seconded the motion. I have Rigsby as who made the motion. Who is? Who made the second? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. So the motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven involves a change to the Schedule A with the Sheriff's Department contract. So out of an abundance of caution for my employment there, I'm gonna step aside and turn this over to the Mayor Protem. Otherwise, go back and turn the TV. Is that what this buzz, is that why I'm sitting on this buzzer over here? So the item is, is to approve a modified budget for the Sheriff's Department. And for those of you that have joined us and haven't read the staff report, the, the reason we're making this modification is the county gave the employees of the Sheriff's Department a two percent raise. And, and then in addition to the cost of, of labor, the city basically pays for increased fuel costs and, and maintenance of the vehicles that they use. And so we already approved a budget of six million, four hundred and eighteen thousand. And the five percent increase, so there's also a three percent increase to account for the general services of maintenance and fuel and so forth. So it's the five percent increase in the cost to maintain our law enforcement in the city is an additional hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one. So the total budget for the current fiscal year will be basically six point five million. Are there comments or questions from council members?
Yeah, he just read by, presented my report for me.
Oh, you're gonna do a report?
No, sir, you did.
You did Jarb's job. We're gonna have to increase your pay.
Yeah, I, I, we'll make that the next motion. The, okay. It's up for vote. All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three sheriff service contract in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
The item passed. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any due business?
No, sir.
Any reports to council members?
Got one here.
Yes, sir.
Cool. All righty. It was last week. Time flies by fast. So last week, I had the opportunity to go to the League of California Cities. Went from Wednesday to Friday, first time going in person. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Duper for his service, which I was not completely aware of. He serves on the Public Safety Committee and he's a board member. So a whole bunch of work, getting a glimpse of that, that he has to do in addition to his normal duty. So thank you for your service there.
Thank you, sir.
Three major takeaways I had. So really exciting. There were a lot of vendors there and a lot of different ideas floating around during the conference. I definitely invited some to provide us more information with some of the proposals they had. One in particular I found very interesting was there was a company that had a solution to expand fiber to all our residents. I don't know if that's something Loma Linda could benefit from, from their particular solution, but sounded pretty interesting. And then two others, there's a company that's picking up plastic bottles and cans from people's houses in Irvine right now. No cost to the city, and this is a way that encourages people to recycle a bit more. They don't have to do anything. Someone comes and picks up their stuff, and they get paid for it. And finally, there was a company that was reducing junk mail by using some electronic innovations. So really excited to see all the stuff that's happening within the state and some of the innovations that people are coming up with and working together to make happen. One thing I did want to start was a volunteer day for the city. A lot of cities said that they've been doing this for years, and it's been very success for them, successful for them, and a way to bring the community together. I know the mayor was doing a trash pickup day. This was when I first started, so two thousand and twenty. That would be one of the projects we could potentially do. I know Loma Linda's about to celebrate its anniversary. I think that might be a great day to start something. So even if we only do one project this year, picking up trash, and then maybe expand it as the years go by, would be a great opportunity for all of us to give back to our city and make the city a cleaner and more beautiful place to live. So an idea I'd like to throw out there, and definitely something I'd like to pursue.
Cool. I have to say that when we did those, when we did a couple of the, the trash pickup days, we had a lot of people came out and volunteered. So it was pretty cool. I definitely think there is a desire to do that. So that's a good idea. Okay, reports of officers. Oh, yes, sir. Frontier, I know we have Frontier installing fiber optic. Is that the entire city? I mean, I can't believe it's just my neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, they're right now in front of, uh, Councilman Leonard.
Okay.
Yes, they're managed to get access.
So you could probably contact Frontier or the city manager, find out when they're gonna come down your street too. Because, so the fire, and-
Yeah, so from my understanding, with the Frontier, they're putting it in the road, but it's not going to people's houses, or, yeah, so that's a problem. And that's what this company's saying that they can solve, potentially. If they can expand it to people's houses, obviously, they benefit from it too. So I don't know.
You have to pay Frontier for, if, to, to hook your, your house to the main cable, correct? Yeah.
But they won't be putting the wire to the houses, right? That's the problem?
Again, I, I have not talked to Frontier, but, but from what I see right now is, is they pretty much in front of every house. Maybe if you signed up for it, they will put the ladder or the wire from, from the box in front of your house into the, into the house. Or maybe now it's wireless now. I, I just don't know their technology.
I didn't get close enough to look at it, and I could see, but it looked to me like what they were doing. They're tunneling under the curb-
Yes.
And then across the sidewalk and then stopping there.
Correct.
And they're putting holes in the middle of the sidewalk, and then they're plugging that with asphalt. I'm hoping that's temporary. And then my guess is that when you sign up, they'll come and do the last part to hook it to your house.
And then you might just sign a contract with them for so many years or whatever. I, that's part, I don't know. But compared to our, the way we condition, in our home, is they have to put in the ladder all the way-
All the way into the house.
Into the garage, into the house, yes.
They're all new constructions, have to do that first.
But the problem that we have is Frontier or, or, or the other one, Spectrum. They're now faster and they're cheaper, so we, we might, but then, then ours. So, so, but I'm still gonna push and, and advertise our fiber optic system to all those new homes.
Okay, all right. New reports of officers? Okay. We will move on to the Housing Authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
All we have is the consent calendar there.
Move it.
A first and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the Housing Authority agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The consent calendar items were approved unanimously.
Any oral reports, public wanting to speak on anything on the Housing Authority? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll go ahead and close that agenda and bring up the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted there?
No, sir.
Okay, again, we just have the consent calendar.
Move it.
A first and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The items on the consent calendar were approved unanimously.
Also, a chance for anybody to come up and speak any, on any non-agendized item there. Seeing no takers, we'll close that agenda, and our meeting is adjourned.